Yes, that's against some labor law somewhere. I'm gonna have to start searching for it.
You keep searching.
Keep looking. I'm gonna break my lunchbox for the meeting.
We will bring mincemeat for you so that it's in the month of March. You can feel all inclusive.
I'm pretty sure there's no law against eating at a meeting.
The sign out there says no food or drink. That's why we don't walk through that door.
We can remove that sign.
All right, everybody. Roden Bridge Director, or Assistant Director. Not in this meeting. All righty, it is 1:30 and we are here for a public hearing with our Planning Department. And with that, we will go over our roles. First, we have Staff presents their report, and we'll move into our applicant provides their overview of the project. Then we have public testimony. We go testimony and support. Testimony, when I hear whispering, I pause like, did you?
Oh, you're good.
Okay, neutral, and then four, and then we go back into rebuttals. And so with that, we will call for any conflicts of interest by members of the Board.
None.
None.
Commissioner Williams has none. With that, we'll turn it over to Assistant Director Fann. So this is file VS 0006-24. Does anybody require any accommodations while? Forgot to ask for that. No accommodations? We can all see and hear clearly? All right.
Thank you, Commissioners, Alex Fann, Planning Staff. So as you stated, we're gonna hear file VS 0006-24, Proposal to Vacate a Portion of Paul Street. The applicant is seeking to vacate a portion of Paul Street, a public right-of-way, which is adjacent to parcels RP 0007-2009-04AOA, 05AOA, 007AA, 004AA, 007AA, and is generally located in Section 10 Township 59 North, Range 4 West Boise Meridian. This is the site plan that was given to the Planning Department by the applicant's representative, showing in the shaded area the proposed vacation. This was reviewed against Title 40, specifically 40-203 of Idaho Code. The area to be vacated is approximately two and a half acres. The proposed width of the area to be vacated is between 80 and 92 feet wide. A portion of the proposed area to be vacated, the length, excuse me, is approximately 500 feet, and there are no structures within the proposed vacation area. To access Paul Street, you take Highway 95 north to Sandpoint, exit at East Superior Street, slight left onto Superior Street, right onto South Fourth Avenue, left onto West Superior Street, left onto US Route 2, right onto Idaho Highway 57 North, right onto Dickinson Sheet Road, right onto Clinton Avenue, and right onto Highland Street. There are no mapped water bodies on this property. The area is zone, has a special flood hazard area, Zone X. There is no mapped wetland within the proposed vacation area. The area does have some slopes between 0 and 29.9%. It has Bonner silt loam for soil, and is served by Coolin Cavanabe Fire District and West Bonner School District number 83. So the agencies and taxing districts were notified of this request on January 21st. Comprehensive list can be found in Appendix A at the back of the staff report. We received comments from Bonner County Roden Bridge, and they provided two separate comments. So the Bonner County Roden Bridge Department is opposed to this request for a vacation of public right-of-way. This area has the potential to be of value to the public into the future as a pocket park, or as equipment parking, and/or material storage for our maintenance crews doing projects in Coolin, or as public parking, or boat trailer parking, as use of the public lake access gets busier in the next 100-plus years into the future, or many other potential uses. It is our belief that vacating this area is a detriment to the public and serves only as a gain to private parties. The applicant's narrative speaks to the existing and ongoing public use of this area as unauthorized use, but then goes on to describe what sounds like the intended use, travel through and parking in. The act of cutting trees and brush out of the privately maintained public right-of-way is permitted per the Bonner County Road Standards Manual in order to keep a travelway open, and does not constitute unauthorized use either. The case for illegal activity occurring in the area has not been sufficiently demonstrated. Litter along public roads is a widespread issue that occurs everywhere, and it is an unfortunate fact of life that it falls to those who live in an area to pick up trash along public roads to keep their neighborhoods clean. This is not a unique factor in this location, and is something that I do regularly along my road as well, including cleaning up after people who have dumped entire trailer loads of trash in hidden corners. It is absolutely aggravating that this occurs, but not a reason for a vacation of the public right-of-way. The applicant further requests that in lieu of the vacation, that the right-of-way be marked with private property, no trespassing signs. This would be inappropriate, as it is in fact public property, not private property, and the public's access and use is not trespassing. Neighbors are welcome to install fences and private property signs on their own lots if trespassing is a problem onto their private properties. The second comment from Bonner County Roden Bridge looks like the, here we go. This section of Paul Street is maintained by Bonner County, and in discussing this vacation request with our maintenance foreman, we have been made aware that the crews are having to back plow trucks up out of this block, which is a liability with limited visibility, and we've been working to change routes and/or build turnarounds at the end of the plow routes to reduce the number of backing accidents the county is involved in. With this knowledge, building a turnaround for county plows would be immediately beneficial to our maintenance crews in this wide public right-of-way. That was the only, it appears that's the only update to the comment that Roden Bridge had. We received no public, or no comment replies from Idaho Department of Fish and Game, Cooney Pondery Sewer District, Department of Environmental Quality, USDA Forest Service, and Idaho Transportation Department. All the other agencies that were noticed at this file had no comment or did not reply. And as of the day of the staff report, we received many public comments which are included in your packet today. I apologize for the small type, there is a long narrative. So the first section is Idaho Code 40-203-1. The Commissioners may by resolution declare their intention to abandon and vacate any highway or public right-of-way, or to reclassify a public highway as a public right-of-way where doing so is in the public interest. For the applicant's statement, the 65-foot-wide right-of-way will not encompass the existing travelway and road prism that is called Paul Street. Since the time that Chris John and Tracy Bradley, Michael and Michelle Lenker, and Daniel and Deborah Hewitt acquired the property in 2021, 2011, and 2004, and 2016 respectively, there's been an ongoing issue with trespassing, the act of cutting trees, and littering, to name a few. The 60-foot-wide platted right-of-way, Paul Street, and the 36-foot-wide area labeled parking on the plat of first addition to Town of Coolin Lot 2, instrument number 10717, records of Bonner County, Idaho, recorded on October 1902. Nowhere on said plat does it state that the purpose for this 36-foot-wide parking area. With Priest Lake's close proximity to these lots, one can assume that the 36-foot-wide parking area was intended for people who owned lots in first addition of Town of Coolin Lot 2. Another assumption that could be made is that there are very few public right-of-ways within Bonner County that are not being used for what they are originally intended for, travel over and across them. Instead, people are parking their boat trailers there for the summer and treating it as if it was private property. Anytime there has been complaints in the past regarding that could be deemed as illegal activity, it has not been taken seriously by the Police Department and often made Bonner County's Roden Bridge Department's problems. The proposal for this platted right-of-way and dedicated parking area vacation would be to vacate the 60-foot right-of-way, Paul Street, and five feet of the parking area. The adjacent landowners listed above would acquire said 65-foot plus the width of their lots through this process. Though this wouldn't benefit other landowners on the immediate south side of Paul Street, it is beneficial for all of the neighborhood and citizens of Priest Lake who want to enjoy their right to quiet enjoyment of property they have purchased and maintained with a sense of pride and ownership. This will clean up the area, eliminate unauthorized use, bring additional tax dollars in real property revenue to the county, and eliminate the county or state being liable for any incidents that could arise due to this known unauthorized use of the county right-of-way. In lieu of vacating this property to the owners, we would like to see this right-of-way be marked by the county private property, no trespassing, and police to ensure there is no trespassers and/or unauthorized use of the private property owners adjoining property at some point. If this continues, there will have to be a decision made as to who is responsible, the county, the state, but not the adjoining owner suffering from being adjacent to this public right-of-way. It is our hope that you will consider our proposal for what would be in the public's best interest and mitigate an issue that continues to grow. After that long narrative, I want to remind that is the applicant's narrative, that is just the applicant's narrative. So for the staff response to 40-203-1, staff has received feedback from Bonner County Roden Bridge that opposes the proposed vacation of the portion of Paul Street, as I read in the previous slides. So 40-203-2, no highway or public right-of-way or parts thereof shall be abandoned and vacated so as to leave any real property adjoining the highway or public right-of-way without access to an established highway or public right-of-way. The burden of proof shall be on the impacted property owner to establish this fact. Staff has stated that based on materials submitted in this application, no real property adjoining the area to be vacated would be left without access to an established highway or public right-of-way. This portion of Paul Street has not been developed, but appears to be used for public parking as intended by the plat that dedicated this right-of-way. Idaho Code 40-203-3, in the event of abandonment and vacation, rights-of-way or easements shall be reserved for the continued use of existing sewer, gas, water, or similar pipelines and appurtenances, or other underground facilities as defined in Section 55-2202 Idaho Code, for ditches or canals and appurtenances, and for electric, telephone, and similar lines and appurtenances. Staff response, the vacation of this right-of-way will not extinguish any rights-of-way or easements for the continued use of existing sewer, gas, water, or similar pipelines and appurtenances, or other underground facilities as defined in Section 552202 Idaho Code, for ditches and canals, for electric, telephone, and similar lines and appurtenances, and any of the utilities located in the proposed vacated portion shall be granted easements by the applicant accordingly. Idaho Code 40-203-4, letter A, when a county or highway district is to consider the abandonment or vacation of any highway, public street, or public right-of-way that was accepted as part of a recorded platted subdivision, such abandonment shall be accomplished pursuant to the provisions of this section. Staff response, this section of the state code is applicable to the proposed vacation request. The portion of Paul Street that is requested for vacation is a public right-of-way and was accepted as part of the first addition to the Town of Coolin plat, recorded in October of 1909. 40-203-4B, when a county or highway district is to consider the abandonment or vacation of any highway, public street, or public right-of-way that was accepted as part of a platted subdivision that has never been improved or developed, such vacation or abandonment may be approved through the dedication of a new highway, public street, or public right-of-way without compensation as set forth in subsection 1I of this section. The staff response, per the applicant, there appears to be no plans to rededicate the right-of-way per Roden Bridge's comment. The right-of-way has been developed and is in use by the public. Idaho Code 40-203-5CI, in any proceeding under this section or Section 40-203A Idaho Code, or in any judicial proceeding determining the public status or width of a highway or public right-of-way, highway or public right-of-way shall be deemed abandoned if the evidence shows that said highway or public right-of-way has not been used by the public and has not been maintained at the expense of the public in at least three years during the previous 15 years. The staff response, it appears Paul Street was dedicated by a plat, first addition to Town of Coolin in October of 1909. Per Roden Bridge's comments, this public right-of-way has been used by the public and developed for public use. Paul Street is a public right-of-way and has been maintained at the expense of the public in at least three years during the previous 15 years. According to the Roden Bridge comments, GIS information, Paul Street is currently maintained by the Roden Bridge Department. Idaho Code 40-203-6, all other highways or public right-of-ways may be abandoned and vacated only upon a formal determination by the Commissioners pursuant to this section that retaining the highway or public right-of-way for use by the public is not in the public interest, and such other highways or public right-of-ways may be validated for judicially or judicially determined at any time notwithstanding any other provision of law, provided that any abandonment under this subsection shall be subject to and limited by the provisions of subsection 2 and 3 of this section. The staff response, the right-of-way proposed for vacation is being maintained by Bonner County. This right-of-way of said highway or public right-of-way is not located on land owned by the United States or the State of Idaho, nor on land surrounded by, or land owned by the United States or the State of Idaho. However, lands owned by the State of Idaho are located on the eastern portion of this right-of-way. This land also has access from Kavanaugh Bay Road, a Bonner County-owned and maintained public right-of-way. Approval of this road vacation may leave real property adjoining the highway or public right-of-way without access to an established highway or public right-of-way, particularly those to the south of the proposed area to be vacated. And that concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions, or if you have any questions for Mr. Mulder, he can answer as well.
So let me ask you, did you want Mr. Mulder to come up?
If you have questions for Mr. Mulder, this would be probably a good time to ask.
Or do you have questions on either Mr. Mulder or Assistant Director Fann at this time?
I have questions for Mr. Mulder. I know he wants to talk.
Well, I can always talk, right?
So could you just give us a brief update on when the last time you guys were up there doing any work on that right-of-way, whether it be plowing or brushing or anything?
Yeah, I'm sure it was this last snowstorm that we had, the plows were in there plowing. It's part of our plow routes to go in there. Looking on the GIS map, it is bright green layer showing that it is county-maintained. In discussing this with our maintenance foreman, Mark, he wasn't aware that we owned such a wide stretch on the north side of the road there, but his opinion was, man, if I'd known we owned that, we would have built a turnaround there ages ago, and that's definitely something that if this does not get vacated, we'll want to do that this summer, because this has been a problem spot for us.
I'm assuming you guys are having to back out right now?
That is what he described, yeah.
Okay. That's all I have.
Appreciate it, Don. Any questions for Mr. Mulder?
No, not for Mr. Mulder. I appreciate that clarification. I think the safety concern is the primary one for me, from your written comment, so thank you for that clarification. I do have a question for Assistant Director. Yeah, just because it's more fun that way. Assistant Director Fann, what I'm trying to do is reconcile, and it's probably just the way I'm reading it, but under the staff analysis, the...
All right, I wanted to follow along.
Absolutely, that's why I'm gonna pause, I'm gonna give you an opportunity. Might take a minute or two.
Okay.
So under the staff analysis, if we're on page six, it's the second bullet associated with Idaho Code 40-203-2. So the staff summary indicates that no real property adjoining the area to be vacated would be left without access to an established highway or public right-of-way. And then, under the assessment of another section of the code on page eight, which is the last bullet for code section 40-203 subsection 6, the staff comment, the last sentence of the paragraph, approval of this road vacation may leave real property adjoining the highway or public right-of-way without access to an established highway or public right-of-way, particularly those to the south of the proposed area to be vacated. In my reading of that and looking at the GIS mapping, those two statements appear to be in conflict for me, and I'm not, I may just be misreading and misunderstanding it, but I'd like to get clarification on that as part of our deliberation. Future deliberation.
I put that on my deliberation question, too, and I wonder...
And if you need time to look that over while public comment's occurring, I'm okay with that, but I would like to get that answer before we deliberate on the topic at the later half of the hearings.
I was just gonna leave, when I have circle number two, that's gonna take an amount of chunk.
So I'm okay if you wanna, if you wanna take a look at that while we're hearing public comment.
Can I ask him a question before you... Quick question. According to our GIS map, it looks like the right-of-way abuts ideal state public land on that.
It does.
It does.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions?
That was all for me at this time, thank you.
All right, applicant. Who's speaking for the applicant?
I don't know who's the surveyor, what's gonna get on, what's gonna get on the zoom, but I don't think they go...
Whoever's gonna speak for the applicant, if you could come up this way, and remember to state your name.
Would you, I'm sorry, would you like the surveyor to?
Sounds like he's on.
Okay.
Is he on? Are you there?
I just see a question.
Okay.
So are you...
I'll get up and talk, except he's not present, rather, first of all, about this.
So state...
My name is Chris Bradley, I am the applicant.
And whenever you want to tag in your surveyor, you just tag him in.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I'll just do this. But first of all, I appreciate everybody coming, good afternoon. This is new news to me about the road department opposing this, so I didn't think it'd come to fruition to come to this hearing, and if they did object to this, so that's new news to me. I know we had a planning meeting with a few gentlemen here, and they wanted to, for me to identify another piece of property to exchange for this property in the, we're talking about the vacation. Then the hearing came about, I have not been able to identify another piece of property to, you know, to exchange for this, in lieu of this, because they want to put a shop or have a shop so they can have people accessible up here. That's not in a residential area. So that was the last I heard of that, I didn't know we were getting that. I'm gonna give you a little history of what's going on historically. I've had our property there, well, ever since my son, Easton, was probably, what, three years old, so I've been a long-time person there. We have a shop, sleeping quarters, we're campers there, and so we enjoy the property. Currently, as we said, we, people are coming in, parking trailers for a long period of time for the whole summer, and I don't know of any property, you know, can I park a trailer out front all summer long here? Understanding the intent was for trailers way back when, they were gonna have a roadway that came from the boat ramp up to Paul Street Dill, they vacated that road, and now it's a house, went back then, decided in 1909. So now for people... So now for people, for the public to use the property, they'd have to drive through the. Residential area and come up with a, hey, this is, you know, parked through here, we're going to walk it through people's neighborhoods to get back down to the water. So that's kind of what we are currently. People are cutting trees down and creating their own space. Parking lot keeps growing and growing. This is not regulated, you know, by the county or anybody else. It's just a free for all. For parking spots, which is basically adjacent right from my place. My brother has a lot. The very west end of the. He has Parkinson's, he has a trailer. He can't get his trailer onto the property currently because there's boat trailers parked in his. Access way to get to the property. So it's a little disarming. We've talked to, back in historically, talked to the police department, talked to the road department. And it's been going back and forth. I think at our meeting, we said. It's just, hey, we don't know who to tag when we go up there to find somebody or put a sticker on the trailers, you know, because the the thoughts are not identifiable. As far as take to which piece of property they're, you know, we assume they're at wrong. All right, five years ago, I came in, talked to, I believe, a planner. Her name was Sweeney, I believe. Does she remember Sweeney? Planner, Swanee? Okay, it's been, it's been a while, but I talked to them. She said, I said, this is a situation in the road department at the time. I went down to the road department, told them the situation. She said, could get approval from the road department? To try to push us to see if they approve it, because that's your first step. At that time, they said, yes, we approve this property. It's been, you know, a nuisance for us. And I don't think that was you at that time. And so at the time, it's just taken during COVID during whatnot, trying to get people up there to. We went out, had it surveyed, et cetera, all the properties. Based on the information that she had, she's no longer here, and I think the road department person is no longer here either. So here we are today, and you know, that's why. I didn't realize your concern with the turnaround. You know, all this is all news to me. I'm so open minded to, you know, finding another property. Do that, but it'd be nice to find a solution. Like I said, that. I don't know of any long term county parking where you can park a trailer for free all summer long. I mean, I just don't think there's such a thing out there, except for this section next adjoining on our property. But I do appreciate your time. Do you guys have any questions for me?
I don't. Do you want your surveyor to say anything?
I, is he on? Hunter, do you have any response?
He's on, but he's muted himself.
He's, yeah, he's on the, he texted me, said his brain is not working.
I'm, I'm, I'm here. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, I apologize. I, I'm, I'm out in the field, the life of a surveyor, right? So. Just, yeah, the, where I'm at is kind of in and out. I didn't catch the first part of this because. I got the wrong Zoom link the first time, so I missed, I don't know, the better part of the first half of this meeting. But yeah, I, I would be, you know, obviously coming into this, I'm a neutral party. And I'm just. More or less doing my job. When Chris came to me and asked me, you know. You think this is possible? I, I think we said yes, and I mean, we vacate. Not a lot of right of ways, especially in Bonner County, but you know, it's something we've definitely done, so. That's when the process got started and then I just feel like. Like Chris said, the beginning of the process, the tone of the Roden Bridge Department was a lot different than when we went in there a year ago. It was like. You're going to have to write us a pretty good narrative to, to make us fly off on this. And now what I'm hearing is absolutely not, so it went from yes to possibly to absolutely not. So I would just like to get maybe a clear answer.
Okay, thank you. All right, does the board have any questions for the applicant?
I would just like to clarify. I believe you mentioned some concerns about. Trailer, you know, boats or other vehicles that were making access difficult to the properties. Something about difficulty having those ticketed or addressed because of. Struggling to determine ownership or, or. Connection with an adjacent property was, could you clarify that, please? I'm trying to understand what the issue was there.
Yeah, so when I first came in, talked to the road department, you know, is this legal to do this? And they said, well, you know, this was granted to us way back in nineteen oh nine. And so this is, this is intent of what it was, but that mission was aborted when they vacated the road up to that. And currently, there's two trailers that park right in front of my brother's lot. That he, that, that's how he gets his, used to get his trailer into the property was through that access area, and now he's unable to do so.
Are the, when you say that they're in front of the lot, are they on? Public property or private property?
They're on public property.
On the public property.
So the, so it's a.
It's kind of like, you know, if you had your house and somebody's, and it's, it's Dean parking in front of your house, but we can put boat trailers there. For the summer in front of somebody's house. It's kind of like what I feel like is happening to us.
So you're, you're indicating that you're. Not able to access the property along the the south property line.
That's correct.
In certain instances.
Well, and. I'm sorry if I interject. But there, there is a.
I have to pause you. Hunter, when you, when you interject, we have to have a clear pause that changes who is speaking. So can you state your name again, please? Is that the record transcription? Thank you.
Sure. I, I apologize. Yes, Hunter speaking. On behalf of Chris Bradley and H two survey. There, I, I think what Chris is trying to get at with, you know, where they're parked, there, there's a platted alleyway. And not any sort of, you know.
You just cut out, we lost something to you saying.
What I was, what I, what I was saying, I apologize again.
So I can see him on the closed captioning, but we can't hear him and I don't have him muted.
May just be the cell coverage.
He's moving around right now, so we're going to wait a couple of seconds. I think he's doing the can you hear me now thing.
Do you want me to read what?
No. Can you, are you guys, can you hear me?
We can hear you, go ahead.
Yes.
Okay, no, and I, and I guess what I'm, the only thing I'm getting at here is there is a platted alleyway up through these lots. And I think that that's how Chris and his brother act. Actually parking in the platted fifteen foot wide alleyway as well. Which is not, and from being there.
How about we allow you, how about you type what you're saying and we'll have it read into the record? That might be easier, but. She has to come forward to the microphone or someone needs to give her a microphone to read it into the record. Alex, can we grab her?
Okay.
Or you're saying he's speaking and that's.
Yeah, I can see him on the closed captioning.
So go ahead, Hunter, and speak, please.
Oh, I, I don't know what looked heard, what was not heard. But I think, I think what Chris is, is trying to relay is there's a, there's a platted. Within that plot, there's a fifteen foot wide alleyway, which is how. Chris and his brother hit to their lots and, and by the sounds of it, the trailers park. On top of that, and it's, it's not a road. Brought up to any sort of county standard, but it is a road in which they access their current parcels through that alleyway, that plot alleyway. And that, that is being obstructed against the workers.
I was able to follow that. I don't know if.
I did. He's, there's a.
If you look on the second sheet of the file, the survey. You'll see an alleyway that occurs on both of these blocks, if you would.
The middle big one or the smaller?
The two smaller ones.
Okay.
Look.
Can I see that on my G I S map too?
So there's one to the left and one to the right of the larger. Access area.
Okay.
So they're saying that those are getting blocked by trailer vehicles or other vehicles.
Okay.
For access. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Represent what you're.
Yeah, that'd be correct. Thank you.
Do you have anything further you wanted to present?
Well, one other comment that just came to my mind is how it is getting, you know, it's a little crazy when. My son, when he was younger, had a little ATV, a little ninety. And he, we made a little trail down in these lots. And went through our little access way to get to it. And somebody put a private sign, private property sign in front of the trailer and couldn't allow for his ATV to get down in this little gully. And then I turned around and said, no, this actually really is our property back here. And he says, no, it's county's. You can't be on that property. You're trespassing. So I mean, it's just been a struggle all along for us and. You know, hey, without, you know, the road department not approving this, you know, I'm thinking. Where to go, but we did need some sort of solution where people understand and make sure it's used for what it was intended to if we, you know, decide not to vacate it. But it's going to be hard to regulate people coming and going for, and I don't know what policy is. Parking is it twenty four hours or forty eight hours in your parking lot here? How long can you park there? I don't know. But currently it's free for the whole summer if you want to cut some trees down and park your trailer. So I do appreciate all your time and efforts to this.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the board for the applicant? All right, thank you, sir. All right, can we put back up our, we're into public comment here or?
Clarification. It's okay now, or would you like me to?
You want your clarification now?
We can, whatever's the most efficient.
I think the most efficient is during deliberation.
That's fine.
Thank you. Oh, is that what your hand is up for? I'm squinching to read whose hand is up right now, but it has a, is that you?
Oh, no, not me.
Oh, okay, so we are on those of you who are. You didn't put that, the list back up. Which one am I on? I can't remember which one goes first. In favor of, so in favor of the applicant for public comment. In the room, those in favor of the application for the road vacation. All right, none in the room. Online? All right. Please make sure you state your name and county of residence and we will start the timer at three.
Is that me?
I didn't see who she unclicked here. John, there we go.
Yeah, I'm Chris's brother. I own the property in the corner.
I, I need you to first state your name and then county of residence, please, sir, and restart is three minutes so we can start right. Thank you. No worries, go ahead, sir.
And I'm Chris Bradley's brother. I own the lot on Shelton and. And Paul Street. I'm the one that's got Parkinson's. And we don't have the alleyway going into our lot. It goes through my brother's lot, so basically that. County lot has made our lot landlocked. We have no way to pull the driveway. And it's, we have the same problem Chris has with the trailers and trees being cut down. And him, and my, where I pull my trailer, it's blocked the other summer, so I was unable to put it where I wanted to.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other people for the applicant? All right, with that, we'll go to neutral. Anybody neutral in the room? Anyone neutral online?
Yes, John and Tracy Bradley.
That was who we. Are they different?
They're the different person.
Okay. Mr. or Mrs. Bradley?
I'm Tracy Bradley. I'm Chris's sister in law and you just, I'm. We have the lot off of Scranton and Paul right in the corner there. Chris is inland further with, with the road going into his property. I was up there last summer, wanted to bring my trailer and put it on our lot. And we had several trees that were cut, cut down and, and inside there were three trailers. So we couldn't even. Get into our property and so I just wanted to. I, I don't know, when you say you're saying neutral or for applicant, against applicant. We're, I'm not sure what that means. So do we, we're against. We, we want. We want, what's that?
I think you're in favor of the applicant based on your comments.
Absolutely in favor. That's what I meant to just express my vote for that. Thank you.
And then I'm going to add both you and your, and the other as Bonner County residents. Because as much as I'm glad that they recognize they're related to you, that ours is residency, residency, they don't have to call out the person they're related to.
Okay.
All right, so she's for it, Bonner County resident.
Well, but when you say Bonner County resident, I don't reside there. Is that, you want to know where we reside?
So you're not a Bonner County resident, but an owner? Is that what you are?
I'm an owner. We, we're owners. We pay taxes in Bonner County for this, for this property. But we reside out of state, but we come from out of state to come and utilize our property and we, we're unable to at this point. Every summer it gets land, it gets locked up with trailers and, and so forth, and it's becoming extremely frustrating.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
You bet. Thank you.
So anybody that is neutral, which means you don't care either way, you just want to give a comment. All right, seeing none, we'll go to against. All right, so. Let's start over here since you're that heavy. We can slide the microphone. So if I could have you go to the microphone, sir, and say, name, residency, there's one right behind you there. And what, and watch your three minute timer there.
Okay, I'm Steve. I'm Steve Hanson.
You can, you can just take it right on out of there. There you go.
I'm Steve Hanson. I have property two sixteen. I came up here in fifteen to five four four in nineteen sixty eight. I bought my property about nineteen eighty four. And I wouldn't say that the parking lot has been a great asset to the neighborhood. I think one person mentioned that it's kind of a make, I know many does. I know, northside of the wall and Coral is a special place. And this asset is quite nice. I own it. I know everybody to my right. Use it and they take it, they don't take advantage of it. Matter of fact, they seem like they're cleaning up the brush as trucks come down. And I help out myself. And it's, it's a nice, it's a nice addition to the, to the community. And a bar without it would be a bar of the neighborhood. And I definitely have a thought. And you know, the way you guys put it in your land, what I didn't realize what the county uses it for, and that's kind of nice. You did a nice job with defining things. And I think I never saw as a definition of what that was originally set aside for. And you know, this, the information working up is really, really good. Someone's been a lot of done on that. And you know, I don't know if I could build out on the bar, but it was well done. And as far as hazards, no. I never seen ever a problem with a bus, with a brush or debris or anything. And if, if there is a problem with the tree coming down, people jump in, take out it. Because I've been here since nineteen eighty four. And it's, if I lose it, that would be a great loss. And you know, I know it's a supplement of their property, you know, what, you know, I realize what the, the maintenance people could use it for, it's saving my valuable land. And it hasn't been taken advantage of and they could do some, and do some to make it work better for them. I know we, we have a lot of land, every time it screws, they are cleaning roads. We did an excellent job. And all the big trucks, it's easy to roll around. And going to the other strength there, now they're also a little turn around because ATVs and the snowplows get in there, so they're in some room. But. I can see for the guys that do those big snowplows, they got little room to go over. It's, it's difficult for them, so that's. Like I say, that's, those, the parking lot is a part of the fabric of Kulin, the building on seventy four. And I don't want to say that, but.
Okay, how about we, so that you all don't have to stand up, we just hand in the microphone and we can pass the microphone down. Just remember to state your name and county of residence.
My name's Steve Yob and I'm a property owner up there, and this is all my fault. Thirty years ago, I bought Lot Six on Block Twelve and that's the first, that's probably what the snowplows pushed the, the snow. And I cut that road in there and I didn't cut it correctly. I thought that was the road, but I, I was cutting in the parking area, so it's all my fault. I, I chopped all the trees down to get there and I thought I was doing right, but I, I caused those scenario there. But anyways, the situation is that. It wasn't always easy to get in there because they wouldn't plow because I called there and they said, that's not a road, that's not a road. And so a few years later, they started plowing again because I called up and I hated to do, but I had to get in an argument with them, paying taxes to get it plowed in. The plow wouldn't even come down that place because they said it wasn't a road. And that's the parking area is where I cut that road in. And so now the situation is, it misaligns. And so now the situation is, it misaligns with the state, goes out to the state property there, you see it's a jog there, that's where the road should be, and it would alleviate a lot of, well, you see motorcycles coming out of there 100 miles an hour, and even Mr. Bradley's son, I think, a few times came out of there, I just hope he makes it, and, and it's a situation there where it could be alleviated if they did cut the road in properly. You know, and the boat parking, I think, has gone away, but I think people do take advantage of the parking, because they leave their trailers, like Mr. Bradley said, all summer long, they're in the way, and they keep piling up some trailers, been there for years. You know, pretty soon, there'll be campers moving in there, and people will be camping out of there, because it's legit parking or whatever. So it should be defined a time limit of parking, like it was instructed, like the boat launches, they have times to park there, how long they can stay, how big they can be. We don't have any of that there, so I could see a bigger problem coming down the road other than what we have going on right now. But it's, it's a nice place, and I think if it was developed, it would be a heck of a nice place, and people could legitimately park their boats when they're out in the lake for the weekend or something like that. But you know, as far as Mr. Bradley's saying, people do leave their trailers there, and some trailers stay there for years through the winter. You know, it's going to turn into a junkyard eventually, and that's my only thing we need to address, a time limit or span or what type of trailer, before we have a bigger problem with, you know, Walmart people moving in there or something like that. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lori Yob, I'm Steve's wife, and we own, we're, we're not Bonner County residents, we're owners of three lots on Paul Street, the south side, right along that half-block of land that's asking to be vacated, and we've owned that since 1996. Like Steve said, he had to cut the road in, because it was just a jeep path at that time, and in order for us to get in there, we had to kind of cut, cut in to make a road to get into our property, and that was always dedicated for parking. And we knew that when we bought the, the property, that that area was dedicated for parking. And right now, with the state of Idaho trying to promote tourism, and trying to get people up to Priest Lake, and doing all they can to encourage that, we need that parking. There's trailers parked all the way up from the boat launches, all the way up the street, from the marina and the public access launch, and we need that area for people to be able to park trailers during the daytime. But I do agree that there needs to be something done about what, give it limits, as far as day-use parking or whatever, that it shouldn't just be free-for-all, but we, we need that area. It's important, and yes, that access got taken by vacation that used to go all the way down to the marina. We, we don't need that to happen anymore. We need that area for people to be able to use, and not just given to someone.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Avellino Porcello, I live on 339 Missouri Street, just about a half-block over from him. I'm a little confused about the, they're commenting on how that one lot was landlocked, that they couldn't get to it without that alleyway. And that alleyway is unpassable, I mean, not without cutting a bunch of trees to get in there, but isn't that lot accessible off the right-of-way of Scranton? It borders Scranton, so they're going in there, they actually have a cable gate across Scranton's right-of-way, right at Paul Street. So they're like 80 feet off their property, and they've got a cable across the road. But they would have access to that lot on the one they're driving into to get into their property. And I think that parking needs to stay. I like the idea of roads and bridges talking about a turnaround, because those guys do have a tough time in there with those trucks. I can see how that could be a liability for roads and bridges, having to back up for a whole block. I don't know if they have backup cameras, but as far as the comments about littering, I, we've had our property since 1959, through my parents had bought it, and I inherited it. But I've never seen any evidence of littering in there. There has been some tree cutting going on, but as far as coming up, not being able to get into that lot on that alleyway, they wouldn't be able to get in there unless they got in there with a chainsaw and cut trees down. So it's not like it's being blocked from them, because they've never used it till now, or saying they want to use it.
Hi, I'm Andrew Wondland, and I own two lots on Paul Street.
Can I call lots for one second, please? On the, for the people online, we need you to mute yourselves, please. Her circle turns green, there we go. All right, there you go, sir. Please state your name. He told me it wasn't a circle, it was a rectangle.
What?
I said her circle, and he reminded, he said, no, it's a square. He's just messing with me to throw off the meeting. Can you state your name and residency, please?
My name is Larry Wondland, I own two lots on Paul Street, right across from this boondock going on here. And I don't really have anything to add outside of what I wrote in my letter to the commissioners, outside of Avellino brought up this access, and I agree, I mean, this thing is all wooded. Nobody's ever tried to move a trailer through there. The two trailers, the two trees that got cut down, they weren't in the way anyway. The ditch is deep enough that you're going to have to put a culvert in there, and you're going to have to fill it if you do want to get in there. And you could also come in, you're going to have to get a dozer in there and build a road, but you can come in on the Clinton side. I mean, they border on the Clinton side. They own all that property, they can come down Scranton, and they can push a road across there. So there's not an access issue here, outside of them being lazy and not wanting to spend any money to do some roadwork in there. That's all I got to say.
Go ahead.
All right. No more against the project?
I have just one online.
I can't see, oh, Mr. Bowman.
Good afternoon, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, I wasn't even aware of this file until yesterday, and I was in the planning site looking for something, and I came across it. So, I read the application, and I read the staff report, and as I'm going through that, I'm making bullet points of things that I would want to say at this hearing today, and then I read the road and bridge report, and it pretty well echoed everything that I was thinking. So I will just say, everything that is said in the road and bridge report is absolutely spot-on. And I'll point out a couple, just for emphasis, for this vacation to happen, there has to be a public benefit, and there isn't here. And I empathize with the property owners there. If people are parking their trailers in such a way that you can't get into your own property, I, it sounds, I'm not familiar with this exact spot. It sounds like, as if someone were blocking a driveway, similar thing, then that's a law enforcement issue. And if, if, if giving away the county's taxpayers' property to an individual owner because someone is parking their trailer where it is a problem for you, that's, this is not the solution. There has to be a public benefit. And then, the other thing I'll just point out, that was kind of absurd in the, in the application, is the whole concept of taking public property, signing it as being private when it's not, and then trespassing people for being on public property because you put up a sign, that's insane. And I don't mean that in an offensive way, it just is. And I know a little bit about trespassing in private, private property. So that's all I have to say. I urge the commissioners, follow the law, and do not approve this vacation.
And then I'll, we'll recognize, like, that's Dave Bowman, Bonner County resident, that it wasn't clear if it came across when we had some squelching. Alrighty, anybody else online, is this it?
Yes.
All right, with that, we will return for rebuttal from the applicant. I believe that one's our next one. Is, it looks like Hunter dropped off, is that accurate?
Still.
Okay, all right. So Hunter's still available to you, sir.
Okay, well, I appreciate everybody's comments and concerns, I, you know, I think it sounds like everybody's on a mixed feeling, but you know, it's always free, nice to have a free parking spot for the summer, given the cool and deal. Again, that was not the original intent of the purpose of this property, is for short-term parking, and right now, it's not being maintained or done. I used to work for the Idaho Transportation Department plowing roads back in 1986 in Coonville County, so I'm familiar with driving big trucks and turning around in that spot is tight, and it would be tough. When you drive a truck, when you experience that, it's not that hard. If you don't drive a truck, it's difficult. So, with that being said, you know, again, I understand the road department's concerns, I wish I understood them before this meeting, because I probably would have had done something a different route, but here we are today, and I greatly appreciate everybody's concerns and thoughts, and being here, speaking out loud, I think goes a long ways. I would like to see some sort of resolution where we don't have people cleaning trees down, I mean, I think it's a liability, when they're doing this, some of the pictures I have, and one of the trees that fell down, fell down on the trailer, you know, and I don't know how much damage is done to the trailer, but it looks like it's pushed over pretty well. You know, the property, I go in there and try to clean up the brush and keep from being that fire hazard on the properties adjacent to mine, but as far as the county goes, there's zero maintenance there. Now, it does generate, you know, if we're vacated, it does generate a positive tax vote, because we'd be taxed on that property. Currently, there's no tax revenue coming in at all, so from the financial side, that would be a, you know, a plus for the county. So, any questions?
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you guys, appreciate your time.
Can we have staff come back up? And so, at this time, we'll close and go into deliberation by the Board of Commissioners, at which time Assistant Director Fan is going to respond there.
What page are you referring to, are you referring to something?
No, we just closed for deliberation, and then...
Something for him?
Oh, he was looking at...
He's replying to my question.
So his, his comment was on in the code 203 subsection 2, and then in, there's a, appears to be a conflict of statement in the summary.
Commissioner Corn, it would be the staff statement under the second bullet on page six.
Are you talking about 40-2031?
40-2032, so the second bullet, the staff comment there, as compared to the staff comment, the last staff comment, which is on page eight.
Okay.
Thank you, I'm just trying to get clarity.
Okay. So, Alex Fan, planning staff. So, the discrepancy lies in, well, partially in 2036, where it says that the, the properties to the south of the proposed area to be vacated, it would be, it may be the east, which I mostly I'm referring to the Department of Land property. There is a public right-of-way that runs through it, and other public right-of-ways that abut it, but I don't know what their access is, if there is illegal access off of those roads, and I'm not sure if Mr. Mulder would know that off the top of his head or not. So, I would say for clarification that the, that the analysis in 440-2036 is accurate in that it may leave real property adjoining the public right-of-way without access, and that is also a, that is also written in the findings of fact of this staff report.
Thank you for clarifying.
Does that answer your question?
It does, because it's specific to the, the state of Idaho lands.
Okay.
Not to privately-held property, correct?
No.
Thank you.
Correct.
So that's what differentiates, that's what differentiates 2, which is real property, from 6, which is state property. Thank you for clarifying.
Or deliberation.
And I would like to call on Mr. Mulder through our deliberation as well, to help answer some questions, so.
You wanted to snatch that microphone between the two of you, that way it's...
You know me, questions, questions.
So, can I start with Commissioner Corn, though?
Please do.
To my left.
Oh, I'm not prepared yet.
Not with the loose... Doesn't matter, how the clock is ticking on this round circle.
So, I see this as the right-of-way vacation would not be in the public interest. I don't see any reason why it would be in the public interest. One of the big things for me is that the right-of-way does abut the ideal state public lands, and we are losing access to our public lands, I'm going to say on a daily basis, but it's over-exaggerating a little bit. I, I can't be a part of, part of that, I can't be a part of taking away more public access to our public lands. Simply on those, I'm a simple guy, simply on those facts, I just can't. I can't see why the county would vacate their, our right-of-way, our public right-of-way. I understand your concerns with some of the issues there, and I don't know if the county can do anything if, if we don't vacate, I don't know if the county will be able to help mitigate any of those issues as far as blocking things. I don't know why the county wouldn't go in there and at least do some brush clearing, I don't know what kind of trees those are in picture, logging, whatever, to create a nice turnaround spot for the road and bridge department, possibly dig out all the trees and make it a wide-open parking lot, like it's supposed to be. That's what it was designated for. I don't have a problem with following through on that. That might be a discussion for further day, since we're just talking about the vacation of the right-of-way, but.
I, specific to road vacation, it, one of the things is, what is the benefit to the public? One of the things that has been established by this file is that the public is actually utilizing the road by which we are being requested to vacate, which constitutes a problem for me, because then we're actually taking over, taking away resources from the public. I also echo Commissioner Corn's concerns of vacating land that's publicly owned. The, there's, when you look at the reasons by which the county would vacate a land, the applicant actually isn't addressing the reasons that the county would vacate the land. It's more of kind of the nuisance that exists with public land, which there might be an opportunity to address those concerns separately outside of this meeting, but to say we would give up real property because of littering, or because people are overstaying the, the welcome on what's public land, potentially, isn't a, a requirement for, when I, when I'm looking at the title of 40, road vacation, that's not what it's for. It's that I need to show that I'm, it's owned by all of the people. In this exchange, it would be benefiting to actually a smaller number of people than the greater number of people. And so for me, it doesn't meet the standard of a road vacation. It is publicly-owned property, and for me, it's, it, there wasn't actually an argument made in line with statute as to why we would vacate this land, and I think the summary put forward by road and bridge was, was exactly spot-on of why we can't really vacate the road, because it is a public road with public value, and actually, this application did one thing, was actually increase the value of our public road that we own. And so I think that, that's, that's where I am on this particular, particular file, because I can't, there's, there's not an option within the title for... the title for me to vacate the road. I do appreciate the clarification between two and six that delineates real property versus public access. I think also, it's, our community in Bonner County has been very focused on when we vacate roads, roads as well, because they're looking for us to show what value is a public getting. And in this example, the presentation actually shows we essentially would be documenting that we're taking it away from the public. So, yeah. Commissioner Yobkey?
I concur with the conditions and the statements of both concern and support that both of my fellow commissioners have made. The, I know it will be redundant, but I will just state clearly, again, the importance of maintaining public access to public lands, as well as maintaining our public properties, in this case, a right-of-way. The, again, I know it's redundant, but I think it's important. The road and bridge, Engineer Mulder's comments, I think, are very pertinent to the potential value and potential future uses of that property to the public. That would be for the benefit of all, as compared to the benefit of just a few private property owners. So I also believe that we would be going against all the essence of the statute if we were to move forward with that vacation. That said, I do also agree that, I believe there may be some practical issues that could and should be resolved, that the applicant has brought up about. I want to be sure that we are promoting a safe condition, that we are promoting access to the private property parcels from this right-of-way. And so I think it would be great, outside of this hearing, to, I'd be happy as a commissioner to help have another conversation with the concerned property owners and road and bridge, to talk about things that we could do as a county in that right-of-way in order to help mitigate some of these issues. I think thoughtful tree clearing would be of value to the public and to the adjacent landowners. I believe that being sure that we have well-marked parking spaces that have time limits would make sense. And with doing that, having no parking, to be sure that we have the actual alleyway access to those parcels clearly delineated, so that we don't have a problem that's being created through a lack of diligence with that issue. I also want to indicate that I do believe that the concern over any trespassing that might be occurring, that is the private property owner's responsibility to mark property when it comes to trespassing. And then if it is properly marked, we do have Idaho statute that allows law enforcement to more aggressively address those issues. And so I would encourage private property owners to mark their property in compliance with state statute to that end. So...
Can I ask that we pull it only to the question for the planning hearing, and then address that, because even though you make a decision here, it could be something that stays in play, so that we don't look like we're committing things, and then work with Planning Department and Road and Bridge outside of this hearing?
Yep, that's fine.
That we stay clean and crisp. Is that all right with?
Addressing the comments?
No, no, I know.
That were made about those concerns.
Yeah, no. Thank you.
I understand why you're saying that, but yeah, I think it's pertinent, so...
I would have chimed in, but I saw, I think Bill is off of this meeting now, so I did. I didn't make sense, so thank you.
Yeah, so I just wanted to speak to the concerns that the applicant had raised, but I understand your point. So based on that information, in my concurrence with my fellow commissioners, I think that we've established the fact that it's important to maintain this public right-of-way. So based on those discussions, I'm prepared to move forward with the motion.
Further deliberation? Are we ready for a motion?
I'm, I'm ready.
All right. With that, we'll entertain a motion.
I move to deny this petition, file number VS 0006-24, to vacate a portion of Paul Street as identified in Appendix B of the staff report, based on the following conclusions. Conclusion one, this proposal was reviewed for compliance with the vacation criteria and standards set forth in Idaho Code 40-203. Conclusion two, Bonner County has received objections to the petition or application to vacate the described area. Conclusion three, the abandonment of the public right-of-way is not in the public interest. Conclusion four, the landowner or landowners abutting said right-of-way do have access to his or her or their property from the same public street, public right-of-way, or private road. Conclusion five, by granting this petition for vacation of public right-of-way, real property adjoining the subject highway or public right-of-way will not be left without access to an established highway or public right-of-way. I'm sorry. I need to look at that again. If this were to be granted. Maybe it still have access. So, okay. I'm sorry, I had to double-check the language there. The decision is based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law as set forth in the staff report, or as amended during this meeting, and direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions of law to reflect this motion and transmit to all interested parties. This action does not result in a taking of private property. The action that could be taken, if any, to obtain the vacation is to, one, file a new petition with the planning department and meet the standards required by Idaho Code, or, two, pursue such remedies as may be applicable in Idaho Code Title 40, Chapter Two.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion by the board? Hearing, panel call vote. Ms. Horn?
Yes.
Ms. Yorwan? Yes. Ms. Yorwan?
Yes.
All right, it is...